Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals taking place at Town Hall on June 11, 2024. We will all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a vote for an acceptance of the minutes for May 21, 2024?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to the continued public hearing for 50 Peters Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see everybody again. I'm going to try to go kind of quick because I know there's some others here that are trying to do the same. To recap, we were here prior with an application for a replacement freestanding, replacement internally illuminated freestanding sign to relocate and install a new sign because the neighbor, Chase Bank, had put up a retaining wall and rendered the existing sign pretty much useless. The, a lot of discussion at the last meeting about some of the methodology that I was proposing for a halo-contained illumination. Well, I went back to the client and we've going to omit that request from the application. So the internally illumination has been omitted. Also, other conversations we had was discussions on the setback and also the impending work that's going out on the roadway. I've included a letter from DOT advising that the plan that I have submitted will not be impacted by the proposed work, future work. So it was good to check that. I thought that was a good thing to check out because we weren't sure what we were going to end up with the setbacks on the prior application. In your package, I have included a site plan that shows both the requested setbacks that you guys asked me on the last meeting. One was from the street and one was from the curb. The street setback is 15 foot one. The setback from the curb is 13 foot five inches. I've also included in the package two drawing sets. One is a breakdown of the three comparisons. The first being what I had at the last meeting, which was approximately 18 feet tall with a header on the top, and that was internally lit with a, and had the stone base. There was a lot of discussion that that base was too tall, that the sign was too tall, and the lighting was an issue. What we've done is reduced the sign down to 15 feet. We've also addressed the concern with the plantar height and reduced that down to two And then the, and this is externally lit. And also on that page, we, and this is very close to scale. It's not exactly, but there is an image of the existing sign. So you can really see a reasonable comparison between existing, proposed, and also the prior application that we discussed a couple of months ago. The other request from the last meeting was a photo composition from the intersection that's included in your package. This photograph is taken from behind the driver's wheel of my car. So you can see that there's clearly no obstruction of vision with the proposed placement of the sign, because there's concern about the setbacks that we're requesting relief on. But you can clearly see in this photocomp that the sign does not obstruct your view when driving.
So just for my sakes, as I'm acting as clerk today, I just want to go through the segments and make sure I have the numbers all correct here.
Yes, sir.
So we've got the, so we're no longer including the internally illuminated sign.
Correct.
The setback, the required, the setback allowed is 10 feet. The originally proposed was five feet. What are we doing now? Is it still five feet?
So we are 15 feet from the street.
Okay.
And 13 foot five from the sidewalk. Per this plan, that's in your package.
So is that 13 foot five from the property line?
Um, let me see.
I just want to make sure, because if it is 13.5 feet from the property line, we can X that out as well.
The agenda at least still says five foot.
Yeah.
Right, but.
But when we do the motion. Right.
So it looks, based on this plan, the certified plan from Dana Perkins, that the property line at the corner comes in, this is your purple line that you see on your plan, and the curb line is beyond that. But where the sign is, I would say that we're about 13 foot five inches from the curb, which would be the same as the property line in that area.
Okay. So then in that case, you do not need a setback variance. I just want to make sure I get all this right so that you don't have to come back here.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that.
All right. And then what is the total area of this new sign design?
Proposed square footage on this sign is 59.5 square feet.
59.5?
That's correct.
59.5. All right. So that puts us at a variance of 25 plus 9.5 is 34.5.
At least someone can do math.
Important to note that the proposed square footage that I'm requesting is approximately the same as what's existing.
And then the, the height variance, so it's 15 feet tall, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So then, then it is a relief variance of seven feet because the amount is proposed is, the amount allowed is eight feet.
Yes, sir. And I did take a look around height-wise to see if there was any compatibles in the area. Sign across the street is 16 feet high. The TD Bank is 16 feet high. There's a number beyond 16 feet high up and down Osgood.
All right. Well, this is a dramatically simplified request, which as, again, as acting clerk, I very much appreciate because it's less for me to read.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I will say, I appreciate your client and also you coming back and listening to essentially what the board had asked, what our concerns were, and making this something that, at least from where I sit, a lot easier for me to be able to give your client what it is that they're looking for. So I appreciate that because I know that's not always, it's not always easy. So I know work was put in on that.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
I just have a question. Sorry. I just have a question on this, this rendering here, this photo.
Yes.
Where the sign appears to be placed, looks to me much farther down 114 from the corner there than it actually will be. Is that true?
Well.
I mean, it looks, it's sort of, I mean, obviously, it's not going to be exact.
When they do these, do these photocomps, clearly they're not perfectly to scale and whatnot. So I'm going to just admit that it's not perfect.
Yeah. So I mean, it's actually would be, you know, much closer.
Maybe a little closer to the graph.
And appear to be much taller because I'm sure these street signs are not 16 feet tall or 15 feet tall.
Well, perspective-wise, the closer you get, the taller things look.
No, right. But what I'm saying is that sign is going to be more in this corner of the property.
Yeah. The actual location will be closer to that.
Where it's set up, it does show that the sign is a little taller than the existing sign, right? Which is, is there, but it doesn't, but to your point, if it were put in the location where the sign is actually going to be, it would be much taller than these street signs.
Well, the street signs are approximately 10 feet to 12 feet tall. So regardless where I put it, the sign's going to be taller than your street signs.
Yeah, but just in terms of like using this as a guide, it's visually a little bit off. I wasn't sure, I was going to ask if you were, included it this way to make a more direct comparison with the existing sign, but it's definitely not going to be anywhere near where it is on this picture. I can just tell. Like where it is on the picture is like very close to the entrance in from 114.
The, the task that was requested when we were here last mainly was not to do this photocomp to present the size of the sign, but more the location and the setback because of the concern of obstructing cars when they're at that intersection. So the sign is well back beyond the stop line. Like I said, I took this photograph sitting in the car.
Yeah. No, I think, the photograph, I think, is obviously accurate. It's the placement of the sign that I think doesn't, it doesn't spring to me.
You didn't really ask for, which is fine. It just, it just doesn't, I think it's going to appear much bigger when you're sitting in your, it's going to be much closer to you.
Right. Than it is in the way it's drawn up here.
Well, on the plans is where we're approving it.
Right.
Correct.
So I think for me, I'm probably just going to ignore that picture because it's a little bit like confusing to me.
Confusing. I mean, this is, this is what he's going to be helped to.
Right. I think the close-up size comparisons in the site plan make the most sense to me.
Did we ever get the square footage of the building, existing building?
We don't meet the requirements as a shopping center. We went through that pretty extensively at the last meeting. I'm not sure what.
Yeah, but you didn't, you didn't have the actual measurement, right?
I'll be honest with you. If, if we're not going to have the fight over shopping center or not a shopping center.
No, I get that. But if it was closer than, whatever. I thought we had.
If it was closer, I mean, I guess I say this, if, if he was closer to meeting it, I'm not really sure if it would necessarily matter. I mean, you have to be 50, right, Paul?
Yes.
You have to be 50. So if he was 49, 995, as much as that's close, it doesn't meet the 50.
Well, I think the, the other way to view it is, does it impact the way that you would vote on this issue in front of us right now?
Yeah.
Well, if he had the 50, he wouldn't need to.
Right, no, but more that if it was close, would that change his judgment about how he would evaluate this application?
Yeah.
Quick other question for me. And this is probably something you said the last time around. Is this sign to replace the existing sign or is, are you planning?
The exist, no, no, sir. The existing sign will be removed.
So there must be a sign right at that other entrance back there?
No, sir. That sign will be removed and the area will be cleaned up.
Any further questions from the board?
I have not.
No, it looks great to me.
Can we have a motion to, I'm sorry. Is there anything else you would like to add?
I, no, thank you.
Okay. Do we have anybody here on the 50 Peters Street application from the audience? No. Okay. Can I have a motion to close?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And discussion from the board?
I think these changes are very good. They're very reasonable. I appreciate them being done. Looks good to me.
I went from feeling like we were being asked to approve a lot to being asked like we're not being asked to approve very much at all.
Yeah, just that we don't have to have a discussion on internally looks.
Well, not yet.
Yeah. Except for this one.
I thought that was, I'm bored of that, but that's okay.
See, but see, he was smart. He saved himself from lugging in all of these demos by getting rid of the interior.
I really wanted to show you, but the client has, is the boss on this one.
Are we smart by getting rid of all options of dimmer lights?
Listen, applicant came back.
Yet to be seen. Yet to be seen.
He came back and made us happy.
Yeah.
Okay. So nothing from anybody?
Nothing from me.
All right. Shall I read it?
Yes. I would say to include the new plan.
Yep.
And then I'd also want to include.
The first page. And you want to do the last one too? I mean, the last one is really just informational, I think. Great. I think it's just the first two sheets.
Yes, you can just do the first two sheets.
Okay.
Please.
All right. I move that we accept the petition of Horizon's Management, Poiant Signs, on behalf of North Andover Ventures LP for the property on 50 Peters Street, map 024.0, parcel 0067, North Andover, Massachusetts, 0185, in the GB zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaw section 195-6.6.D2, permitted signs in the GB zoning district for the purpose of allowing a 59.5 square foot sign. Specifically, applicant requests a sign needing relief variance of 34.5 square feet. The sign size proposed is 59.5 square feet and the sign size allowed is 25 square feet. The applicant is also requesting a variance pursuant to the Town of North Andover zoning bylaw section 195-6.6.D2, permitted signs in the GB zoning district for the purpose of allowing a 15-foot-high sign. Specifically, applicant requests a sign needing a relief variance of seven feet in height. The sign height proposed is 15 feet and the sign height allowed is eight feet.
I will take the first vote.
Hold on a sec. I need a site. And using the site plan by Dana F. Perkins Incorporated, dated May 1, 2024, and the schematic by Poiant with a revision date of 5/23/24.
I'll take the first vote with a yes. Ron?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And James?
Yes.
Correct?
Who's second?
Oh. Did no one second on me?
I second you.
Ronald.
Ron's seconding. And all were in favor. So you are all set?
Great. Thank you. I apologize. I could not go out of turn. I actually have another town meeting right after this one, so.
You made it quick for us, though.
I'm doing double duty. Thank you.
It was good. Enjoy your night. Thank you. Okay. Next up is 12 Massachusetts Ave.
All right. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts on Tuesday, June 11, 2024 at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in petition of Carolyn Parker on behalf of Global Companies LLC for a property at 12 Massachusetts Avenue, map 002.0, parcel 0003, North Andover, Massachusetts, 01845, in the GB zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to the Town of North Andover zoning bylaw section 195-6.5.A, prohibitions, internally illuminated signs not allowed in the GB zoning district for the purpose of removing the existing manual pricing and installing internally illuminated LED pricing on the existing signage at the mobile site. Specifically, applicant has requested it be allowed to have internally illuminated LED pricing on the existing signage. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM by order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Parker, 3 Laurian Ave, Worcester, Massachusetts. I'm here representing Global Companies. It's pretty straightforward in my eyes. Manual price signs are very hard to maintain, to change, to go out there and do them every day. They also have to do it at the, you know, at the pumps and shut down lanes to change things like that. So we're asking to allow LED price signs. LED prices can be dimmed. They have a range of like, you know, three to 10. You know, if somebody feels that they're too bright, we can dim them. They're actually brighter during the daytime and actually dim at night. The gas station is only open until 10 o'clock at night, at which time the sign will then be shut off. I feel the area that we're in, we're right off the highway. We don't, and we're not in a residential zone. We're not, you know, we're, have buildings next to us that are similar to our business. And do you need me to read my criteria?
No. All right.
Are you also making the mobile part interior illuminated or just the numbers?
You know, they didn't bring that up to me, but I don't, I don't know if it's lit up right now. Or there must, there might be light bulbs in there that could be turned on.
I'm not, I live right there. I am going there after this meeting to get gas, so I should know this. I don't remember. So I think the thing about.
I know they need to trim some bushes.
The thing about gas stations is that they're very brightly lit all the time, basically. So I, I don't even know if I would notice if the, the sign itself were lit.
And I don't know, I don't know, I didn't notice if they have canopy signs that are illuminated. And like I say, the canopy, the lighting underneath the canopy is, has been changed and is a lot, you know, less bright than it used to be. You know, I wouldn't want to go out there and change those prices. And we're going from three prices, which is nine numbers you have to change every day, or maybe only, you know, two. If it's 89, is it going to be 74 or whatever? You know, to just be able to push a button and, you know, sometimes.
I'm certainly not opposed to, to numbers being interior illuminated. My concern or question becomes is whether or not we're looking at the mobile sign also being.
So I'm going to say no.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I was going to say that the way that this is.
And if we did, we do an opaque background where just the letters would be illuminated. That could be up for discussion, but I don't want to get rid of my LED because of that.
Yeah. So the way that the, these are usually written is that the text would say that, you know, the applicant is tearing down the old sign and putting up a new sign. And that's not the way that this is written.
No.
And so is the plan then to basically keep the rest of the sign and physically just install a different section for the pricing?
Yes.
Okay. So the rest of it will be literally exactly what it is now.
See, that sign is one piece, though, if you notice.
Yeah.
So that sign will be removed and replaced. It's just the faces, the pole and everything stays there.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? So those, that, you can tell it's one piece.
So you will be changing the top part of the face as well as the.
Right. And then it will be.
That's what I wanted to understand from the way that this was written.
And if you allow it to be illuminated with an opaque background, we'd love that. If not, and like I say, I, I'm not here at night, so I can't drive by and say, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
And they didn't.
I'll tell you in two hours.
You know, I, I, I did not do the application for the denial. I'm being hired by a company out of state. So, you know, it just says signs internally illuminated is not allowed, and we're here to ask for.
I mean, wait, and maybe, correctly if I'm wrong, the way it seems to be written, it's very specifically about the pricing. If we were to pass it and they wanted to do anything with the face, they would have to come back anyway.
Right.
Yep.
Well, and that's just, I don't want people coming back if they don't have to come back.
Well, and I don't, I don't know if it's going to look stupid with just prices floating in the air, but.
Well, I mean, the sign is, is visible as you're driving by. It's lit in some fashion.
Right. Well, and that's part of the reason I'm asking. I don't know.
Well, I can't imagine it's externally illuminated from the ground with those bushes around, so.
Well, part of the reason I'm asking, I guess, is that if you're replacing the face, it's a, I, I, Mr. Hutchins would perhaps know better than me. If they replace the face of that sign, does that count as a new sign? Or is that, that would count as a new sign? So, so if that new part that they, if they want to replace the top part of that, they would also have to come back here for another variance.
For what?
Replacing in kind, no.
Right. But if they're, if they're replacing in kind, no. So if it looks exactly the same, basically? Okay. So in other words, if it's internally illuminated now, they can keep it internally illuminated?
Correct.
If they replace it with something that looks exactly the same?
I've probably been there, I can't, how many times, and I can't tell you.
Right. No, no, that's fine.
Isn't that weird, though?
And it, you know, it closes at 10. So I mean, it only gets dark like eight, you know what I mean? Unless, so, but I don't know if it'll look weird with just prices floating in the sky, but.
You can always come back.
Right.
Hey, I got some chowder. I think it was too late to get it, but.
Nice.
Okay.
My corn chowder's better.
Is there anyone here on the 12 Mass Ave? Answers my question. Any questions from the board?
I think it makes total sense, so, no.
We have the rest of them.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, we did the mobile on 114 a couple of years ago, and then we did the Hafners on 125 a couple of years ago as well. And.
That's a big, that's a big one.
The exact same thing.
Well, so Hafners with, I will be honest, I don't 100% remember with the mobile on 114. They gave us a lot because they were, their setbacks weren't there, their sizes weren't there. So they gave a lot to get their, their numbers. I can't remember, and they actually do have an interior illuminated sign, but that is also because they are surrounded by three or four other gas stations right on 114.
Yeah. And Hafners had wanted, if I recall, to be externally, internally illuminated on the banner around the top on the canopy as well. And we turned them down for that.
They are just interior illuminated on their words and their donkey. And that gets turned off at, I believe, 10.
Right. And that would be the same here. And I, I mean, maybe I wrote it wrong, or maybe I was just doing what I was told. I don't know. But let's just, fingers crossed, it's illuminated and we'll be good.
Worst-case scenario, you will see all of our beautiful faces again.
Yay.
Any other questions? Anybody? No? Okay. So this is normally the point where I ask if there's anything you want to add. We can close the meeting, discuss, vote, or we can continue.
No. I feel, I feel that it's a good presentation and that it'll make a lot of people's lives easier and that I should be approved.
Can I get a vote?
I move that we close public comment.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Has anybody got anything?
This makes perfect sense to me. I mean, the same reason for Hafners. It does get to be a safety issue with different parts of the year going up and, and gas prices change much faster than I like. They change all the time. This just makes perfect sense to me.
Yeah. Ladders are one of the most unsafe things that exist. So, you know, less people on ladders is good.
No, I think they use a sticky thing anyway.
Oh, well, all right.
It's like a suction stick.
Maybe it could fall over with or something. I don't know.
I wouldn't want to be out there in rain.
It's good exercise.
Shoulders.
And it's right by the highway. If you're going to have a place with an illuminated sign in North Andover, it's probably that one.
This has been a, I'm going to call it an evolution. I remember when I started that we were pretty adamant about the bylaws. And then I remember the mobile on, over on 114. It seems to me as though the biggest rationale was he was right on the Lawrence border and, and the Lawrence stations had, then the Hafners has come in. So it's like, it's almost time to change the bylaws because we.
Yeah.
Well, it.
Maybe give a little bit more grace to the.
It's, so this has been an evolutionary process. And so I think with technology, I mean, okay, and so I'm just, it seems like, again, that, yeah, we should probably update things.
Well, and we've been doing it for specific cases, right? Where it is particularly LED pricing, which is, as illuminated signs go, minimally invasive, right? And I, I don't think it would be unreasonable if the town wanted to consider a cutout for Right, and I, I, I don't think it would be unreasonable if the town wanted to consider a cutout for that, but that is not our decision to make here.
All right, let's not jump to allowing interior illuminated signs. One fourteen will be filled with them.
Steve and I will talk later, but Alex will kill it.
Okay, so any other discussion? Who do I have voting on this?
Matt.
All right, I move that we accept the petition of Carolyn Parker on behalf of Global Companies LLC for property at twelve Massachusetts Avenue, map zero zero two point zero, parcel zero 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 three. North Andover, Massachusetts, zero one eight four five, in the GB zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to the Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash six point five point A, prohibitions. Internally illuminated signs not allowed in the GB zoning district for the purpose of removing the existing manual pricing and installing internally illuminated LED pricing on the existing signage at the mobile site. Specifically, applicant has requested to be allowed to have internally illuminated LED pricing on the existing signage. And they are citing a schematic by Federal Heath dated October sixth, twenty twenty-three. And is there, is there anything else? Or is that it?
That's it.
I think that's it. All right, nice and simple.
Short and sweet.
Second.
Michael?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
I am an aye. Steve?
Aye.
And Matthew?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
So you are all set.
I hope Melrose likes it too.
Fingers crossed for you.
If I had that double hearing in one night, we'd be here.
Have a good night. All right. I don't even know how to say this one. Montero?
Yeah, Montero.
Montero?
All right, notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at one twenty Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, at seven thirty PM to all parties interested in the petition of Ryan Schreinder, is that?
Both, Schrender.
Schrender, okay. And Mary Schrender for the property at forty-three Montero Way, map one six zero, parcel one five zero, North Andover, Massachusetts, zero one eight four five, in the R three zoning district. Applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to the Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point one A, contiguous buildable area in the R three zoning district. Specifically, applicants have requested a CBA needing relief variance of five thousand two hundred forty-six square feet, i.e. a relief of twenty-eight percent is required. The CBA proposed is thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-six square feet, and the CBA required is eighteen thousand five hundred square feet on twenty-five thousand square feet building lot. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department located at one twenty Main Street, North Andover, Massachusetts. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of eight AM to four PM, Tuesday from the hours of eight AM to five thirty PM, and Friday from the hours of eight AM to eleven thirty AM. By the order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A Jacobs Esquire Chair.
Hi, good evening, guys. If you can just introduce yourselves and then tell us what's going on.
Absolutely, so my name is Ryan Schrender.
I'm Mary Schrender.
So we currently live at sixty Phillips Court in North Andover. So a little background on this, so the house you see behind this ninety-one Quail Run, the other one that's on the plan, so that is the house that I grew up in. My parents bought that when the Quail Run was being developed in the early eighties, late seventies. They bought the lot, built the house there. I lived there for twenty-eight years, first twenty-eight years of my life. And soon after they built the house, the Montero Way was developed, which is the street behind. And my parents, God bless them, they had the foresight to buy the lot behind them so that nobody would build behind them and they wouldn't have somebody in their backyard. So that stayed as a, as a lot, a clear lot. I grew up mowing that lot for God knows how many years, probably thousands of times, I know every square inch of that thing. So in nineteen ninety, my parents actually merged the two lots. From what I understand, it was a tax benefit for them to do that. By doing that, they actually got rid of the grandfather for this, so if they hadn't done that, I wouldn't be here in front of you guys for the, for the CBA. So they merged it in nineteen ninety. We lived there for, you know, the whole time. My parents unfortunately passed away, and after they passed away, one of my sisters bought ninety-one Quail Run, completely renovated it. It's basically a brand-new house and now lives there. It's a beautiful house, they did a great job with it. After that, my wife Mary and I talked about, you know, potentially building on Montero. Went to my sister's, they agreed to let us purchase Montero to be able to build on it. So we started going through the process, started talking to the neighbors and, you know, talking to different people that, you know, were involved. It was kind of fun actually going through the process. Some people told me that my dad used to say, hey, that's Ryan's lot, he's going to build there someday. So that's kind of a cool little story that I didn't know about. So, sorry, I'll probably move them back. Typical surrender. So we went to planning, got the lot resubdivided. It was an A and R lot, so it was, you know, met all zoning by, you know, zoning requirements, frontage, area, all that stuff. We obviously did find some conservation on the lot. It's actually only eighty-eight square feet of conservation, or wetlands rather, so that kind of kicks off this CBA process. So that brings us to you, to you now. We are having to go to conservation, we are on the June twenty-sixth agenda for that. So hopefully that'll be pretty quick and easy from what I'm understanding. But I think that's the whole story. If you guys have any questions, just feel free to ask.
So Ryan, I drove by the lot. And I, I'm assuming, and I want your confirmation, the wetlands in the back of it, there were some trees and some, I'm going to call it kind of a barrier in the back. Is, is, is that the wetlands?
No, so it's in the back left-hand corner. So like, actually the, the neighbor to the left, Chris, great guy, he's actually kind of mowing into our field. And if you went like kind of towards the back part of his lot, that's where the conservation is.
And the conservation is, is there, I'll call it a creek, a little tributary, or what is?
So it's soil, it's, it's soil that they deemed a wetland.
Okay.
It's probably like a vernal pool.
No, it's just soil, no, it's just-
You don't have water accumulation there?
It's, I mean, there's a, just to the left of where the, the wetlands is, there is a drainage ditch there that comes off of Montero Way that drains out and back into Royal Crest. So I don't know if that had something that created this in, you know, in the end over time. But it was just, it, it's because of the Royal Crest wetlands, from what I understand, from what I'm being told, that this becomes a, a more of a wetland. So if Royal Crest wasn't a wetland, this would have been non-jurisdictional, is what I was told. You know, meaning I wouldn't have to do any of this, but because when Royal Crest redid their part of those wetlands, they deemed that now a wetland. And that, because of this flows into that, it creates this issue. If that explains it right for you.
Thank you.
So a question I've got, I'm looking at proposed lot, required lot.
Yes.
And under proposed lot, there's no rear setback.
So there's a couple of different plans, so which one?
In the application.
The application.
Okay.
Page five of seven.
Is that that one you're talking about? Is the one, is the, is the existing additions one?
Looks like this.
Oh, okay, okay, what's, so what's the-
So you don't list what the exist, what the proposed rear setback is going to be? So basically-
It's thirty feet. I mean, like where the house is or where the, the actual setback?
So you need to be thirty feet from your property line?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, I can't see what it's-
Yeah, the first line.
Yeah, it said, I think it's fifty-eight feet, I think is what it is. And then there's a line there that says thirty feet is what the rear is. It's on the plan.
Well, so it says front thirty, side A twenty-five, side B fifty-six point four, and then rear is blank.
And on the sketch of the plan, it says thirty front setback, but it's at the back of the house.
Oh, so the, sorry, you're looking at it backwards. So the front of the house is to the right.
Well, so right here, it says thirty front setback, and then right here, it says thirty front setback.
Okay, so that's an engineer mistake.
I think that's just a typo.
So this is the rear, right?
That's the rear, yeah, that backs up the Quail Run, yeah.
But it's, it's definitely more than fifty-six point thirty-
Yeah, fifty-six point three seven, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's actually, one of the side setbacks, you're exactly twenty feet, and it's required to be twenty feet.
Correct, yeah, so it's, the way the lot is shaped, it's, it's a really weird shaped lot, so we kind of, my goal was to have it kind of pushed as close forward as possible. Not only for Chris, the neighbor to the left when you're looking at it, but for my sister out back as well. And that's why we bumped right up against the twenty. But no variance is needed other than the CBA.
I don't think I, I see any, any neighbors here. Have they given you any feedback on the plans?
Yeah, so we've met with either neighbor on both sides, Andrew and Chris, because they're obviously the biggest ones impacted. Showed them where the house was going to be, talked, you know, plantings, you know, to, you know, natural screening. I don't love fences, I prefer natural screening myself. But they seem receptive to it, they're aware of tonight's meeting, and, you know, they're, they're really good guys, I like them. I'm happy, excited to be their neighbor, I mean, it's good.
Jen, did anything come in? Any emails, questions?
We're not accepting any more live emails.
No.
No. How many renderings have you guys done for the house setup?
Two? So why? What do we ask?
I always get concerned when, especially in a situation like this, and I, I appreciate the history you have with the property.
Yeah.
I appreciate what your parents were doing. When we're always looking at new constructions and needing something in a form of relief, I always get concerned of how many times did we try to make this work with as little relief needed as possible? In the sense of you're looking at a relief of twenty-eight percent.
Correct.
Which is not massive. But the first renderings you did, were you looking at only needing twenty percent relief, or were you looking at needing fifty percent relief and?
I have no say over that, that's the wetland.
Yeah, that, that's literally the lot, right? That's not, that's not building.
Would that not matter?
I think you could, I think you could make a thimble and I don't think it would change anything there.
Yeah.
You'd have to trick the house to change it.
No, you can't, no, the, the, the CBA is calculated purely off the wetland. It has nothing to do with the house.
And the square footage, the total square footage of the lot versus the total square footage that's in-
It has nothing to do with the house. It's the lot itself, like we did on Salem Street, we okayed the lot with the CBA.
It's not a Florida area, area.
Right. I almost wonder if like, if they had kept the lots the same, like together, and just had two houses on the same lot.
You can't have two houses on a lot.
Well, that's a, that's a different variance, I guess.
Don't we have one that has that?
I can't say we don't have one that, but you're not, you're only allowed one.
It's technically a zoning, not, yeah. Can you get a variance for that? Would that be easier?
We don't get variance for that.
Yeah, I think the only thing that would change the amount of variance would be if they had redrawn the law lines differently between the two properties.
Correct.
And I'm assuming you couldn't do that.
I mean, I could have pulled some for my sisters, because their lot's forty-something, forty thousand three ninety-five.
Yes.
But it would have been like this weird, because the way the bylaw writes, it has to be outside of a hundred.
Also, like the part of her property that is closest to you is also significantly within the hundred-foot buffer, so I think it could even make it worse.
Well, I would have had to basically, like the right side, or if you're looking at her house, the left side, the top part of this, I would have had to like pull a line from there. Because you have to be outside the hundred feet to be within the legal area.
So hypothetically, if, if they divided it further and, and cut off that back corner and changed the percentage and then just let that be a land.
Well, and I can't change the lot line now, they've already made the lot line.
Correct. I'd have to go back through planning.
Yeah, you'd have to go all the way back through planning. I, I guess-
I mean, I know that the CBA doesn't change, but it's antsy on new constructions.
Yeah. They are building in the furthest part of the lot that is from the, the wetland. And if there are concerns about habitat, it sounds like it's been mown for forty years.
Yeah, forty-one years or whatever it is.
Yeah, so, you know, it's, conservation would manage whether there's like some sensitive habitat to, to be considered in the building process. This is sort of like a, like a clerical question, is that kind of what we're?
Well, so the, the zoning law says you have to have a certain amount of the, of the land on the plot be buildable. And they don't need that number.
Continue.
So us, right, so us saying no here would more or less be akin to declaring this lot unbuildable.
Correct.
We would be saying that nobody can build on that lot.
Okay, except for, that makes it sound as if, keep in mind, the lot was combined.
Oh, I'm, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying that that's what we would be saying, right? We would be saying that this lot with this cutout is not a buildable lot. We are certainly within our right to do so.
I don't like doing that either.
So is, are we in a scenario where, that we make a decision here, zoning appeals, and then it goes to conservation? And then their, their decision becomes then the ultimate decision? Is that how this is going to work?
Well, no, you're going to conservation because you have conservation.
Correct.
They have, what'd you say, eighty-eight feet?
Eighty-eight square feet, yeah, it's like small, it's like the size of this table.
Okay, so they have eighty-eight square feet of conservation, which is why they go to conservation. I don't know-
Because they, they're building within the hundred-foot offside.
Correct. That's why I go to conservation.
So they have to, they can review it, but they can't, you know, they're not going to prevent-
Yeah, they put stipulations on it and such. Which they will, I mean, that's, that's their process.
Well, I always get worried when we have conservation in the sense that if conservation wants to change something and we approve a specific thing, I don't know how that will affect-
So I'm sorry, change the what?
So if you have, if we have these plans.
Yeah.
Right? Well, I suppose it doesn't matter, right?
So I'm not in the fifty-foot no build, so I'm, I'm in the fifty to the hundred. So the only thing they really have is like, like controlling runoff and things like that. They can't, they don't have necessarily say over the house at that point. It would just be controlling like the runoff, where the water goes, all that fun stuff.
Anybody got anything?
Questions?
Questions, comments, thoughts, concerns?
So the actual construction, so we have this eighty-some hundred square feet of conservation, okay? And so how does the building of the house? Okay, so again, I, I looked at the lot. How is what we're doing then just moving the house closer to that? Or are we actually using that conservation land for part of the house?
No, so I can't be, I have to be twenty-five feet away from the conservation fee, at a minimum, for the do not disturb. From twenty-five to fifty, I can't build anything. You could put, you could put like a driveway in that area or like a patio, but you can't put a structure.
Okay.
And then the fifty to a hundred is, you know, where the house would be. So they would, you have say over like runoff and things like that.
Okay, and so, in summary, and I'm asking my peers about through, you know, am I understanding this correctly? So then that, we're not infringing upon the conservation, but what we are doing is shortening the distance.
Well, no, we're just saying that they have, we're-
They have permission to build.
They have permission to build regardless of the CBA.
We're just overriding the CBA today.
Which isn't something conservation has, but this says proposed lot line.
So that's probably when I was, went through planning.
It's dated five fifteen of twenty-four.
Again, probably it's an engineer's mistake that he probably should have taken that off after the fact.
Okay.
The plan is recorded, it's, you know, at the registry, it's a, it's a separate lot, and that is the lot line. Yeah. So for example, the one from nineteen ninety that's recorded has the exact same thing, the proposed lot line being removed. So it's, you know, it's the exact same.
And is that why you went with the same line?
Exactly, it's the same as what it was created, when the subdivision was created.
Is, was that a factor in planning's decision to say, sure, go ahead? Like they were, oh, well, this was existing before, and we're just putting back what it was there, yeah?
They didn't talk about that, no, it was literally like a ninety-second thing. They looked at it, said it meets all the parameters, and I was out of there.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Not a lot of discussion back in the-
No, no.
I'm just wondering.
Even like the most recent one, like when I went, when we went, what was it, two months ago, whatever it was, it was literally like a ninety-second.
Yeah.
I don't even think I said a word.
We try to make the night a little bit more entertaining when you come to zoning.
This is like the minimum size that the lot could be in this area, right, for zoning?
Twenty-five thousand.
So they couldn't have just like lopped off the back corner? So they couldn't have just like lopped off the back corner? It would've been a too, too small a lot. Gotcha.
Yeah. Twenty-seven feet less.
Yeah. Yikes.
Shall we move to closed public comment?
So our options at this point are, we, and I always just throw it out there, you can continue to the next meeting, or we can close public comment, board discusses, takes a vote.
Yes, so I guess just like, if I can say one last little piece?
Absolutely.
So again, this is gonna be our forever home, I'm probably gonna be carried this, carried feet first out of this home. It's a neighborhood that I loved growing up in, there's still some neighbors when I was there growing up, they're so excited to have me back and my sister back. You know, it's a lot that if they hadn't taken out that line, we wouldn't be in front of you, we would just be pulling a permit, well, it has to go to conservation probably still, but maybe pulling a permit and going. So I hope that you can understand, you know, we have twin little, twin boys that are seven, seeing them going in the cul-de-sac and running around.
And I just wanna say, Ryan and I are, well, I'm a mortgage loan officer, and Ryan's a Realtor, and we're desperate for housing right now. I, like, any, anytime somebody is looking at a house, there's like ten offers on it, it's just, it's absolutely insane. So like, anything that you guys can do to try to, you know, help North Andover have more single-family housing that people can purchase, like they can, you know, buy land and live someplace, I would, you know, I'd say we desperately need that.
So I guess I would be okay with you guys taking your vote.
All right, can I have a motion in a second?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So discussion. It's a weird lot, but all the setbacks are met, right?
All the setbacks are met.
All the setbacks are met, right? And to me, that's kind of a critical piece, nobody asks for anything on any side, front back, that works. I agree with the issue on shortage of housing, that is a big issue. I don't want that issue solved before I sell my house.
So no rush?
All right, we're not denying that for that hope, okay?
You should never admit that you're putting your personal interest first, being recorded. Just excuse me a second.
No, all transparency. No, I mean, I, it meets major criteria for me, setbacks in another house in North Andover.
And it's an area where it's, you know, it's a significantly developed area, it's not like it's adjacent to previously undisturbed stuff, you know, it's...
I also raised my kids on a cul-de-sac, and it's great.
All right, my cul-de-sac's up the street, so you know, some of us get a little jealous.
So I don't usually say anything in use, because it's my little mind, but...
Your opinion is always welcome.
But the thing is, on this one, it's a little bit different than a lot of them, this isn't for profit. So he's gonna get it, move it in himself, and go back, go back home, so I think that's one thing to think about on this. I mean, it's not the only thing to think about, but it's something, like, we don't have a builder coming in and just, hey, I want you to create this lot, I'm gonna make a couple hundred thousand, and I'm seeing where, I'm out of town, he's standing down, he's staying there on that lot, so I think that's...
So I will say this, I am raising my children in my childhood home, my two little ones, I'm raising them in my childhood home, so I do fully appreciate, I will be taken headfirst out of my home when the time comes in a hundred years. So I do appreciate that. North Andover is a great place to grow up, and it is a great place to raise kids. I have to find a number of CBA that I will not go above. Double digits sometimes doesn't work.
Percentage just gets a little wonky.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I always get iffy on new constructions, in part for me, that's probably because I have seen people come in and things on paper look great when you actually build them. I mean, one of the things I'm looking at when I'm looking at your sketches is, are we looking at a walk-up attic here? What's, what's...
The house is on that street, it's pretty big.
No, well, and I appreciate that when I'm looking, but...
It wouldn't be out of scope.
Yeah, it would, it would fit in the neighborhood.
Neighborhood. So that's where I stand on it.
So I, I had never been back there before, and I was surprised to see this lot, so I, I think that it's a nice fit, I think it would be, I think it would look nice in the neighborhood.
Did you walk onto the lot? Because I drove, I drove by, I drive in these neighborhoods all the time, but...
You walked onto private property?
No, I asked Steve if he did. I'm asking Steve to incriminate herself.
I have, but I didn't this time, no, I didn't get out of the car.
Okay, yeah, no, I didn't either, so like, it's really far to even see...
I didn't even know that this street existed, I'd never been back down Quail off of Chestnut, I'd never even been back there.
See, there's an advantage to the zoning board, you learn more about the town.
No, it's very, I, it's a very quaint, and to think you grew up there, wow, I mean, it's nice, I mean, think about it, back then, it was like you were probably back in the woods, you know, more...
You're mowing that lawn.
That field used to be a lot bigger, and over time I stopped mowing it, so I wouldn't have to mow so much, so I can get out the door.
Oh, so that wetlands might be partly your fault.
The wetlands are off the, it's more like the...
You kept dumping the grass in the back, you created...
Created a box, you know? So the, you know, I do think about, we had a number of months ago, a property that was, you know, something like twelve lots, that was looking to divide itself.
You have to bring that thorn up, huh?
And we denied it, and I think that was the right call for that one. And I think if this had been twelve lots and we were dividing it up into plots this size, I would be pretty skeptical of that, because I would say, well, why not turn it into ten lots, right? And so if there was a way to slice that finely with this, then I would probably push for it. But it is a binary choice of a single lot, and, you know, in addition to the things that Mr. Hutchins said, like, I'm, you know, as somebody who lives three thousand plus miles away from my sister and would love to live closer, I think that would be great.
Well, you have to be seeing if this is too close.
Well, that's for them to figure out, you know? I don't know their relationship. They may regret that later, but, no, I think, given what the constraints that you have in front of you, like, the only way to make this, you know, less of an ask would be to pull property off of your own siblings' property. And to me, like, at that point, that distinction, that's a distinction without a difference, right? Because I have to imagine you guys will probably all stay there, and so it's not actually changing anything, it's just redistributing a line between two houses. So I, I'm comfortable with doing this.
Just one other comment, that was, I was curious to see who would be here in the galley, and the fact that there is nobody opposing it was just another reason why this, to me, is a go for me.
James, Matt, anything?
Good.
Nothing? All right. I guess we can make a motion.
All right.
I would just do the plot plan.
Okay, not the, not the architectural drawings?
I'm learning that the architectural drawings are not as significant as I would like to think they are.
Well, and in this case, we're not asking for anything specific to the building, right? We're not asking for a variance on the paint or anything like that, so... Yeah, okay.
But that's the actual house.
All right, so I move that we accept the petition of Ryan Schrender and Mary Schrender, do I have that right this time?
Yeah.
For the property at forty-three Montero Way, map one six zero, parcel one five zero, North Andover, Massachusetts, zero one eight four five, in the R three zoning district. The applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to the Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash seven point one A, contiguous buildable area in the R three zoning district. Specifically, applicants have requested CBA needing a relief variance of five thousand two hundred forty-six square feet, a relief of twenty-eight percent. The CBA proposed is thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-six square feet, and the CBA required is eighteen thousand five hundred square feet on twenty-five thousand square feet building, building lot. In referencing, the site plan by PFS Land Surveying dated May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and it's drawing number PR dash one.
Michael?
Aye.
Ron. Oh, I'm sorry, can I have a second first?
I'd like to second because I don't have a chance to do this. Second.
You're not gonna give Steve a chance too, on his last time?
Oh, you have, he has been so fast, it's his last time, you give him any, I second it. Thank you, thank you, Ron.
So we have Michael first?
Aye.
And Steve seconded. Michael is an aye, Ron?
I'm an aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Who do I have? Laura?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye.
Thank you, guys.
So you guys are all set? Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck at conservation.
Yeah.
It'll be a fun process.
Always is.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good one.
Take care.
All right, we have a forty B notice regarding a mortgagees notice of foreclosure. The address is twenty, I don't even know how to say it, Maragano?
Marengo.
Marengo Street, Unit Four, Building Two. So we really understand why we get those. And we also have departures. So as everybody on the board knows, this is Ron and Steve's last meeting with us.
And that one took a nice surprise.
They'll no longer be greeting us with their present, so we like to thank them at the zoning board of appeals for dedicating years to long meetings, drive-bys.
Walking on private property.
Walking on private property, doing god knows what else.
Oh, I could've sworn it would be a liquor or something.
Oh, nice, thank you.
The shape of the bag.
I fooled everybody.
I will say, can I make a comment before we go?
Of course.
I, to be honest, I have no idea whether, I finished my second term, my third term, I just have no recollection of it whatsoever.
The date's on there.
All right, I'll read that at some point. But I remember the first meeting I came to, there was something, I forget what it was, but there was a woman in the audience, and she wasn't, didn't, had no dog in the fight. And she was going on for like thirty minutes about drainage issues. And I realized that I was so far out of my depth, I said, I should just like resign immediately. I'm happy to say it got a lot better. And I think this board's gotten really good since I joined. I mean, it's been, it's actually a lot of fun for me, so I want to thank you all for making it as good as it's been.
Well, thank you.
I thought you were gonna say that when it was Alex, previously.
I mean, I might have a dog in the fight on drainage.
I want to make a comment too, and that, this, the one thing that never ceases to amaze me is that this is of the responsibility of when you're, you know, on this board, it's just awesome. I never ceases to amaze me that the decisions that we make, as I drive around town, and I look at, well, we voted for this, or we didn't vote for that, yeah, I mean, it's a, it is a significant responsibility, it's a very humbling, I have learned a lot, and I still a lot that I don't know, but it's just, being a part of it has, it's been a very great experience of North Andover. I know a lot more about North Andover now than I ever would have had I not participated. And it's been fun to get to know people, and there's been a lot of, there's been people that have turned over over the years, not a lot of turnover, but it's, everybody brings a different perspective, and I sit here oftentimes, and I just go, wow, that's, that's good, I didn't think about that, so, it's a great educational experience, I've enjoyed it, thank you.
Well, thank you for joining us. And I think, gentlemen, you have now completed your final North Andover zoning board of appeals meeting.
Yes, we have.
And next one, I'm still, I'm gonna go sit over there.
There we go.
I'm gonna make your life...
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Can I have a motion to close?
One of them should do that.
I make a motion that will shut down the meeting here.
Can I have a second?
For Ron and for Steve, permanently.
Can I have a second?
I will second the motion too. I think that was a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.